Good evening. Call this meeting order. This is a regular session of the Mayor and Council, City of Bisbee, County Cochise, State of Arizona, being held on Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM in our council chambers. A little call, please.
Campus member one, Edith Hill, not here yet. Campus member Johnny Jacomino, excuse me. Campus member Frank Davis.
Here.
Mayor Ken Buck.
Here.
Campus member Larry John.
Here.
Campus member Mel Sweet.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Anna Klein.
Here.
City staff, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Terry Bagley, finance director, Dora Landers, personal director, Matthew Dern, public works director, Kim Cox, police chief, Jim Williams, and Sarah Chief.
Thank you. Just going to change the agenda just real quickly. We're just going to say a pledge of allegiance and then for the moment of silence, we're going to do a little something a little extra tonight. So let's, can we all stand? For the president.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For a moment of silence tonight, I'm going to turn the mic over to my mayor, Pro Tim Anna Klein, and let her go ahead and make a little bit of an important moment for us. Thank you.
First off, on behalf of the City of Bisbee, myself and my family, we wish to conquer the North to the Maddox family. Over the years, these speeches are getting harder to write, and that's because I've been privileged enough to know the person well. This time particularly is difficult for me because I watched Taryn grow from a rookie into, well, one of the finest officers I've ever known. He joined the Bisbee Police Department on May 1st, 1995, to help people, to make a difference, and he did exactly that. Who knows how many lives have been changed because Taryn was there, or how many crimes were stopped because Taryn was there? Back in the day, I would help and sit on the oral review boards for new police officers and trying to get Taryn and Bobby, Ben, and the rest of the crew to behave reminded me of raising my own kids. A lot of times, they'd say, "Stop it. Behave. Be nice." These are some of the best memories I'll share. For 19 years, Taryn served this city with compassion, empathy, honor, and integrity, much having lived his personal life. So many more words could be used to describe him, but I told myself I should. This city is better for knowing you. I'm better for knowing you. Watching your voice continue in your footsteps gives me peace of mind that the tradition and legacy started will continue for you. Sergeant Maddox, thank you for your service and dedication. Take it from here. Please. Sam, 21. Sam, 21. This is the last call for Sergeant Taryn Maddox, Bisbee Police Department, end of watch, April 29th, 2023. You have served the community bravely. We thank you for your dedication to the City of Bisbee and State of Arizona. Your duty is done. You are cleared to go 10-7. Rest in peace, sir. We'll take it from here.
Take a moment and spend a bit of a hard week for all of us. We don't have our city manager tonight. We lost his aunt just last week, and our city attorney's not here. He lost his son just last week. So it's been a little rough section for us here in our city family. And, you know, not anyone gets any easier, but we appreciate everyone's dedication and continuing to serve the public even through these tough times. With that, I'll move on to the confirmations and any announcements. Do you have one confirmation? I'll be reading this on Thursday. Thursday is the National Day of Prayer. So whereas religious freedom guaranteed by the First Amendment to the United States Constitution for diversity in the faith, practice, and Americans has made this nation a beacon for people seeking the freedom to worship according to their conscience. And whereas Americans of every race, background, and creed come together in churches, synagogues, temples, mosques, mosques, and their own homes to pray for, meditate for guidance, wisdom, and courage. And whereas Bisbee citizens are diverse people with a remarkable variety of cultures and religion, religious traditions. And whereas, just as individuals rely on prayer for reflections of courage, hope, and renew in their private lives, prayer and reflection is also turned upon during times of joy, crisis, and tragedy in our public life. And whereas Congress has called on our citizens to reaffirm the role of prayer in reflection in our society and to honor the religious diversity, our freedom permits by recognizing Thursday, April 2023. Whereas the Bisbee Christo Fest Fellowship is observing the National Day of Prayer with program prayer on behalf of the world, the nation, state, county, and the City of Bisbee at 12:00 noon on Thursday, May 4th, Unity Church of located at 301 Arizona Street. Now therefore, be resolved that I tend to chair the City of Bisbee to your right. Thursday, April 4th. Be declared as the National Day of Prayer in the City of Bisbee, with the hope that our citizens achieve what those people can understand. Call the public. Some people signed up. Doug, did you want to speak to the item that's on the agenda, or would like to come?
I'm here to answer questions.
Okay, I'll put that on, read that, or item three. If there are any questions. You, Doug?
Yes, hi.
Hi. You bet. I want to-
How are you? I've talked to several of you on the phone discussion. I do apologize if you already have a resolve in the works and are not aware of it. But what I was going to ask is, what are we, what is this doing about parking with Bisbee residents? What do you-
Okay. I have to clarify, most people, since you haven't been here before, probably, anything that's called a public that's not on the agenda, we can't-
Oh, address.
We can't go back and back-
I apologize. Okay.
Yeah, but tell us your opinion, and we can take that. If I have this set up. Go ahead.
Well, the only thing I was going to say is getting, as I think might, people, I called you, you were right to call you. Last week, just to give you an example, I was pulling, we're so desperate to park in parking space right now, the residents of Bisbee that were scrambling to park space. So last week, I was pulling, backing into a space, and some gentleman on the motorcycle was out, or he was pulling back behind me. I almost ran him over, and he both said, "This is the problem we're having. Everybody's in a hurry to get to space." People are really angry right now because my friends who are handicapped, and if you get a face in handicap parking because people are walking in from to go get coffee, or it might be a handicap person, but not a resident of Bisbee. So I'm just asking, I hope that you could just, I've avoided it many times, and we, I keep hearing, "Oh, we're trying to work something out," but I haven't seen anything work out. My people are giving really, I'm a person who loves work because I'm a farmer. I just had six shows sold them out, and Taryn won for the business. But unless we resolve this issue, it feels like this is beside, and that's all I'm saying. Thank you for letting us know. And when, so when is the next, I can be here, calling in or whatever.
My car?
Sure.
Appreciate it. Just give me a call, just talk about it.
I have, I have called you before. I have called you before, and I have called you before. Okay, thank you.
And Brown, you were here. Oh, you've been appointed tonight.
I'm on the agenda.
If you want to speak, I'm just here if you have some questions.
No, I'm just here to be present.
Okay. Thank you. All right. With that, we'll move forward into general business. So first order of general business and the accounts payable. Can I have a motion?
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $304,000, $368. Second.
Have a motion in second. Any discussion on anything?
Just have one. Page two, it's $1,750, $50 average property appraisal in relation to which property belongs.
That's for, with Jerry Cobra in state, the property behind-
Okay.
The 17th.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Seeing none, I have a motion in second to approve accounts payable in the amount of $334,360. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. None, the ayes have. On the general business item two, this will be the consent agenda. Lawien's A through H, first four are approval of minutes. Some discussions of land, it's only one requirement. And we have two, part considered use permits, one of them for pirate weekend, on August 12th. Also, this is, sorry, no, this is a record license application actually for the City of Bisbee, hopefully on baseball or softball. Anybody have anything to pull? All right, seeing none, I'll accept a motion for consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent, and the items A through H.
A motion second to approve the consent agenda. Show, items A through H, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. None, ayes have. Moving on, we have no old business, so we'll move on to new business. First order of business will be a discussion of possible approval to establish $2 and time sets as price per square foot for sale and transfer surplus city property, home and adjacent to a whole bunch of numbers, which I won't bother to go into. This is a surplus property that City came to Blue Canyon before it turns and goes back up towards Adams. Really attracts no other properties than put in for it. It's got all the appraisal work and everything else. I'm just presenting this, you'd like to order, per se, that you can see in your packet, what property. It's broken into two sections. The first section is the larger section, and I think we're sending, uh, the price on that is $30,000 of the property, a little over $2 and nine cents a square foot. That's what it's priced now at. Questions on this? The second one, which will be item four, will be for a small, much smaller piece that actually houses built partially on the property. Any questions on approving this? See, now it's approved. Also, well, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we, I move that we stab, please stab, establish $2. This thing is so small and hard. We should have something else. Go ahead.
I move that we establish $2 and zero points as price per square foot for the sale and transfer surplus city property, being a portion of city-owned property located
Hello? And? So it's an ordinance, right?
Yes. So then, I move that- I move that we approve ordinance O-23, okay, authorizing the sale and transfer certain surplus city property, being a portion of city-owned property located adjacent to all the numbers I previously read, owned by Mr.-
Second.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance O-2308 as read. Or a call for it, please.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember John.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Buck.
Aye. This is, and asleep, so moved. This will be item number four. This is a, again, this is another small piece. Keep looking at your map, that part of the house, I believe, sits on.
Was it 1948?
Yeah. We're just cleaning up and taking care of, that's why it's appraised about the same amount, but it is only a $4,500 portion of city-owned property. Again, it can only benefit the joint parcels and house it sits on. So, any other questions? I'll zoom this one out, okay? Okay, so I move to reestablish $2.664 as price per square foot for the sale and transfer surplus city property, being a portion of city-owned property located adjacent to APN 103-59140G. I move that we approve ordinance O-2309, authorizing the sale and transfer of certain surplus city property, being a portion of city-owned property located adjacent to APN 103-59140 G, owned by-
A second.
Have a motion in a second. That's read for approval of ordinance O-2309.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember John.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Mayor Buck.
Aye. As asleep, removed. I know. There's a hierarchy. All righty, thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Nothing else, we kind of get long up here. All right, move on to this. This is a, one hour Republican on the notice intent to adopt an ordinance O-2310, this is amending the City of Bisbee zoning code, Article 9, definitions, by adding the definition of parcel coverage, Article 5, this is specific to planning the zoning by adding the maximum par, parcel percentage for block coverage. So we've noticed this for a public hearing, and so at this point, I don't know if anybody needs any more explanation of, we've read the, the ordinance, but we'll discuss that after I, after we have the public hearing. So I'll open this public hearing for this ordinance O-2310, changing on Bisbee zoning code. Do we have anybody here to speak in favor? Seeing none, do we have anybody here to speak against this ordinance? Something change? Seeing none, do we have any?
Of course.
It's come to the clerk to be read. With that, I'll close this public hearing. Let me just take the mic for a minute. Upon reading this and seeing that our city attorney's was out pretty much all last week, I read this and I have an issue with it because what this does is, the reason we're passing it is, the more you cover land, the less the rain will be able to soak in and recharge our, our asphalt. So almost all municipalities around started these types of ordinances where you can only cover so much of a block with unpermeable, in other words, nothing soaked in, like the concrete or roof or whatever. So it makes a lot of sense. However, upon reading it, I, I feel that this is going to happen, make an exception somehow within Old Bisbee because as it is written, 45% of is the, one of the least amounts that you cannot cover. So I know of several lots right around me that are 1,000 square feet that have houses on them or had houses on them, and they are grandfathered in as buildable lots. And if we put this in place, we'd only be able to build a 400 square foot house, which really not work well with our infield, what we want to try to do in Old Bisbee. So my suggestion is, what I'm going to do is table this and take it, once I have Mr. S. to come back and, and just like BRB now has authority to lower the setbacks, we have setbacks in code just like this is, and area around it, so if you don't need that, they can set back like we have in Old Bisbee, then they can waive that requirement. I think that needs to be added into our, our code, sort of just for this particular application. Questions? Kind of presenting it because I have nobody over there. Does that make sense to anyone?
Yeah, it does, fine.
So I'll just make a motion to table this until such a time that I can bring it back from our city attorney with, I don't have any problem with this as such, but I also want to see attached to it some change so that it will exempt, or will be able to exempt Old Bisbee as, as, that's my motion, just to table this until such a point, bring it to the city attorney. Second, I have a motion second to table this until a time further. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, nay. Turning down this item, it's tabled, and we'll move on. We'll do item six, this is discussion of possible approval of resolution R-2306. This is adopting the intended budget for the City of Bisbee for FY 2024, as well to give, to give notice for the time of the public hearing to the taxpayers for adoption of the budget. Terry, would you like to give us the last move?
Terry, I'm told this will be approval of the resolution adopting the budget here 2024. This resolution sets the expenditure limitation at $87,72,248. The bulk of this, $59,000, $40,000 is for existing new tenant of France, $9,679,000 for rental fund operating, and the remaining $18,353,025 dollars for operations of the enterprise funds and, and others funded outside of that. Amounts allocated to departments and funds can be moved around after this point if needed, but the total extended amount cannot. The public hearing on the proposed budget and property tax law is scheduled for June 6th, followed by an adoption.
Okay, thank you. So for the public out there, our public hearing on this will be June 6th, and feel free to come up if you feel like there's something you would like changed. I would like to just mention so that everybody out there knows, luckily, because we were able to bond out a lot of the PSPRS yet, so we don't have that hanging over our head, this will be one of the first years, quite a few years, that we can give every city employee a dollar fifty cent an hour raise. I know that's not as much for some of the higher ones or for the lower worker, lower paid workers, but it stops the bracket creep of making things bigger. So that's what we did this time. Also, for public safety, due to the fact of having a lot of openings that we're having a hard time filling, that we're low on both, both our police and fire employment, that they both will be receiving a $5,000 a year raise, so we'll be moving the police department. Now, this is beginning person with no, no past experience, hasn't been to post, we're hoping to move from $46,000 to $51,000 for the fire. We're starting also a five, what's that? Went from $46,000 to $51,000. Oh, there it is. Yeah, I've got, please. That's, Taryn makes from $49 to $15,400. You know, it's also a $5,000, so we'll be moved to that. It was a, I have to be honest, I have relatives in town this weekend, and I probably didn't spend as much time on the city as I normally do, but it's hard when you have families. So, but that's, that's why I wanted to know, is we've had some people say that firefighters and police officers will make it up, and I agree, I don't think they have because I'm a hard time recruiting them. So I'm hoping this will help us out in that, and, and this is a first step in moving forward and helping also our, our employees. So I will entertain a motion for a resolution.
I move to approve resolution R-23-06, adopting the tentative budget physically year 2023, 2024.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution R-2306, adopting the tentative budget for our fiscal year 2324. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
It's a, it's a resolution.
What's that?
It's a resolution.
All except resolutions R. Thank you. Roll them up.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember John.
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Klein.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. All right, item number seven, this is a discussion of possible approval of FY 24 employee benefit renewal agreements. Well, our public personnel personnel, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I am bringing to you the renewal agreements for our employee benefit plans, Blue Cross Blue Shield. We initially received the increase of 9.2%. We worked with Becky Lopez of C-Biz, and she successfully renegotiated overall renewal to a 4% increase. This increase is currently included in the budget, and it's still, the additional 25% supplemental coverage for the base core family plans is also still included in the budget. Blue Cross Blue Shield will again offer us the $10,000 in wellness funds. In the past, we have used those on gift cards to target where- In the past, we have used those on gift cards to target where they can get, especially during COVID, it was something they could get either medical supplies or services, anything like puzzles, you know, to do at home with the family. And that's how it's been so far and we haven't made the final decision for this year, but that is there. Delta Dental has issued a rate pass and do still have an agreement to sign, which is in the packet. Our VSP Vision, we're currently on a two-year guarantee period, so I do not have any additional agreements to sign for for them and those rates will not change. Mutual of Omaha, which handles our life insurance, AD and D and voluntary life insurance along with our short-term and long-term disability, both of those have a rate pass until twenty-twenty-four. Alliance Work Care Partners, that is our employee assistance plan. This is one that we are required to have with public safety. It's Arizona revised statute that we need to provide traumatic event counseling and the rates have changed. So last year we were a dollar eighty-four per employee per month and this year it will be going to a flat rate of forty-eight hundred dollars. And that is based on market rising cost. We did also review and look for other services, given that was a significant cost increase and they are still one of the lower and that is all in the packet. I put everything on here for discussion, however, I just received the actual contract for that employee assistance plan, so I will be returning with that and we may be able to have further discussion of that. So tonight it is just addressing the Blue Cross Blue Shield and the increase there. And then additionally with the Blue Cross Blue Shield, we will be adding some higher deductible plan options. It's something that's been requested by the employees and it's just another option. Some employees like to use that that funding source, having the higher deductible but then lower monthly and also working with a. HSA, I apologize. And so that is also available. And at our open enrollment, we will have representation from Blue Cross Blue Shield and Becky Lopez with Cbis that will really focus on explaining those options to the employees so they understand, you know, that there's different levels of, you know, financial impact that some of those have. But at least now we have them available if someone chooses to collect.
Questions?
And that's mostly for family coverage, correct? Like for the higher deductible?
Yes, it typically would benefit employee family plans, spouse and children or children.
And, you know, I it's always amazing. Everything going up, always managed. They watch out for us and so for that, you know, I'm always.
Other questions?
Yes. Looking at the medical plans, you're saying what affected this was that we had some large claims. Was this like the worst we've had? It happens seven large total claims totaling two hundred and eight-six thousand has the biggest impact. Was this just for informational purposes? Was this one of the highest year we've had or did how did this impact the? If you look at the medical plans, the executive summary, it says city of Bisbee has seven large claims totaling two hundred and eight-six thousand dollars, largest claim making the largest impact. Is this just for informational purposes? Was this instrumental in us getting? And how is it comparing to previous years? That's all. Let's see how.
I do not have that data prepared to be able to look at and compare. And and I would also would not be able to speak to the number amount of our claims from the past year. That is definitely something I can prepare and share with mayor and council.
I just I just want to see how this has been higher than usual. This is not knocking it.
I.
If I remember last year, it was like asking more than this.
And despite, so one of the pages included in the presentation from Cbis is the medical renewal history.
Yeah.
So based upon those numbers, you can see that we are still keeping really good percentages for our renewal rates, considering national average is usually about twelve percent increase per year. So if I were to make an assessment, if you would, I do not believe that the those high claims are affecting our renewal rates.
Still within the the ranges that it's not having the.
I mean, last year, last year, our renewal rate was, I would say, seven percent, seven or eight percent last year. So, I mean, again, I I'm curious to see and that would be good information to have it to be able to share. So I can definitely.
Thank you.
Did this go before the employee? Just the the general information?
The general information? No, it did not. I did not have this at our last employee council meeting. We did discuss the renewal and I definitely put out to the employee council that I really wanted to begin a communication and and a dialogue in regards to what is important to our employees. I would definitely, I I want to plant that seed and move forward there. For example, some cities offer pet insurance and, you know, for some employees, that is very important, that those are their dependents, those are their family. And so I really kind of put it out there, you know, talk, let's get this kind of out there. What would what would make a difference for you? What would make an impact for you? So that if there are other options, we can take those and look and work with Becky, see what options are available and what maybe, you know, we could upgrade or change in the future.
Thank you. I was just wondering, I mean, I know that city office. Best. In that the cost of hand, so I was just wondering if they had any input so far.
All I can really share other than that is that really the only request I was aware of is was to look into those higher deductible plans and how the lower monthly costs. I can say that since we had Blue Cross Blue Shield, I do not hear many, if any complaints or issues with Blue Cross Blue Shield and the service or providers.
Anything else? Okay, with that, I'll. For motion.
I move to approve the fiscal year twenty-four employee benefit renewal agreement for Blue Cross Blue Shield health insurance, dental insurance.
Second. A motion and second to approve the FY twenty-four employee benefit renewal agreements. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those in favor. There none? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
You bet. Moving on, item eight. This will be discussion with the sanitation department. Get some more rollout cans.
Good evening, mayor and council. So sanitation department, excuse me, does need to go out and to purchase two hundred universal carts or, you know, the rollouts that we have, ninety-five gallon rollouts to replace broken cart, broken cans and also issuing to new accounts. There also are, we are trying continually to add more stations to Old Bisbee to account for them. So we actually currently building some of those racks to add some out there. And then a hundred of the carts, we need our of the art, we're asking for tan and those are commercial cans and a lot of the ones in Old Bisbee need replaced and we are completely out of our tank commercial cans. So so we just need to purchase these two hundred total and that is for fourteen thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars and thirty cents, which does include the shipping and the tax. Any questions on this?
Yes, I mean, I know that sometimes we're kind of rough on our rollouts here, but are we having to replace some of our? Well, are these going to be able to have your material previous ones that? Sierra Vista?
Yes. These are the ones that we've purchased previously, that they're toter cans, but they're, we purchase them through waste quit and they are better, we like them better than the ones that we got from Sierra Vista. The ones from Sierra Vista were definitely cheaper, they got us where we need to be and we're definitely using them. They are breaking a little bit more, I don't know if because they were in the sun more because they weren't, they didn't use all of them, but we are starting to replace a lot of those that we did get from Sierra Vista.
Talking about seventy-five dollars. Yeah, that's not too bad.
Yeah, we we used to, we shopped around and we always come back to them, they have really good cans of the ones. They're like a they're double wall, I guess you could say. They're different type of material than the regular, than the ones we got from Sierra Vista, so they're pliable, they don't they don't break, they then when the garbage truck picks them up, they just go back.
Now they only come with wheels and fat.
Yeah. That's how they ship them. So it's if you have to have multiple trucks.
I just allow them for hours. Uh, any other questions?
Okay. The two hundreds gonna be deployed immediately or are you gonna have some reserved? When you say two hundred, how many of the two hundred gonna be deployed and when will be future?
The the one hundred blacks will be in reserve right away. The the tan ones will probably put out probably fifty right away, you know, within the next few months and then we'll have fifteen.
So the two hundreds are not going to be all deployed, some of them are going to be preserved and they're going to be utilized later on.
For replacements when other, when the the blue ones start breaking down more and more, we'll be replacing them.
Why are we buying the two hundred now?
Sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have to buy a hundred can of them. So I would, I would have been fine buying fifty black and fifty tan, but I have to do a hundred.
To get the price?
To order, to order. I can't order fifty of one color, ask me a hundred.
So the two hundreds will will help us in the future, maybe I'm going to be all utilized immediately. The second question I have on this, that's if this is correct here, that's going to put you up the seven, six thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars in the hole, which you mean, what that tells me you're going to be above budget for this. So how are you gonna modify this amount?
As you asked.
Yes.
And you would see that I got the parentheses in it.
Now you're ready for me, yeah.
Yeah, because I found out that, well, with when you capitalize, when it's over three thousand dollars, usually we capitalize a purchase. And so I have twenty thousand dollars in my capitalized fund, but they, it goes by the individual car, which is over seventy-five dollars. So I have the money in the capitalized, this will have to go in non-capitalized.
It's gonna be direct expense, not capitalized.
No, it's not, not.
So what amount will be capitalized? Are you saying the six thousand nine hundred is the amount's gonna be direct expense or that's any difference going to be capitalized? Can you explain that?
No, there won't be any capitalized.
It won't be any, it's all direct, direct.
But I do have money, it's just in the.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, so it's not gonna be, it's gonna be a direct expense, it's gonna be an expense, not 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 capitalized.
Yeah, because it goes by the individual car, not the whole fourteen thousand.
That explains that. Okay, yes. Thank you.
Any other question? Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the purchase two hundred universal carts from Waste Quit.
I have a motion and a second to approve purchase of two hundred universal rollout cash cans. Have a roll call for the amount.
Councilmember David.
Aye.
Councilmember John.
Aye.
Councilmember Sully.
Aye.
Mayor Proton.
Aye.
Mayor Buck.
Aye.
Passes. Thank you. Moving on to item nine. We have one person signed up to call the public. Selecting my microphone and I have your three minutes. There's a lot of public funds that go to the police department in town, whenever it could be going to different aspects of the community. Couple of meetings that had issue where the community was informed that the pool is not going to be opened up this year. Last meeting, we had the police who came asked to have their police department pay sick for over a hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now again, this week, we have the police department coming asking for more money, this time to purchase a lease agreement for four years for one two thousand twenty-three Chevrolet Tahoe for the amount of nearly seventy-two thousand dollars. So I'm just here to point out that there's a lot of public funds that continue to flow to the police department on this community and there's a lot of different aspects in this community that could, that desperately need the money. Thank you. Okay. Just so that it's clear that anything that has to do with the pool has nothing to do with money, we have the money for that and also painting the building is part of the upkeep of things that we have. As we are charged up here to maintain assets. So this this is a basically a discussion of a possible approval of annual lease agreement for one new twenty-twenty-three lease package, Chevrolet Tahoe to the former state bank for four years.
Thank you, mayor. Good evening, council. It's pretty good to drive the same as the last lease agreement, same company that we did last time, I believe, I spoke in ad nauseam about hard meat vehicles, so elaborate, let me know. This one's actually a good holdover from this year, we're actually getting it a little less than what book is on it with the same outfit. And again, it's going to be a patrol vehicle out on the road for use by the officers.
Questions?
Should be to it.
Yeah, no. Moving down the line. All right, that's fine.
It's black, ma'am. I can get any color I want as long as it's black. That's where we're at right now. Unfortunately, there's a nationwide shortage going on for next year, they don't. Trying to shake it right. This one was actually ordered by another department and the guy that I deal with actually called us because that department thought I didn't want to cancel it and the first phone call was he knows where we're at with our vehicle.
So the decals will be able, I mean, we'll be able to see them.
If you'd like to afterwards, I I had to redesign them because of the color of the vehicle, I do have a photo of it, I can show it to you. I think you guys will like it, I'm kind of keeping it to myself right now because I want to. But I can show you a photo of the mock up. I didn't take your voice.
We'll keep it, thanks.
All right.
I got a peek at it. Now, go ahead.
Chief, will this be a replacement for an existing or to be an additional? I mean, are we gonna be retiring one that's currently unleashed and this will replace it or we'll just have a more cars?
No, sir, not. Every time I come to you for a vehicle, it's to get rid of another.
So this will replace another car that currently. So this will replace another car that we currently lease in and is being retired? Am I?
Insurance gone, registration gone, it's going to go to auction.
We're not adding more cars. This is to clarify this.
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Well, it's got 200 plus thousand.
285,000, yeah.
Just, just, Mayor, just elaborate on this. So this car, basically we lease these cars. So the one that just retired, what will happen to the car?
It'll go to auction, public auction.
We'll sell it and get some, hopefully some, some money for it.
Might get a dollar.
Why a dollar? Okay, so that, that explains that. It's a replacement. Okay, thank you.
And also, I was waiting for it, I was going to tell you, it's in my budget.
Okay, I know. No, I wasn't going to ask.
I've been with the carrier, it's all good, man.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Any other questions, anybody? entertain a motion.
I move to allow the Bisbee Police Department to enter into the annual lease agreement for one new 2023 police package Chevrolet Tahoe between Bisbee Police Department and Farmer State Bank, any 7/1/2023 for four years for a total of $7,730.
I'll second that. I have a motion and a second to approve a lease agreement for a new Chevy Tahoe, the police department. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hill? Councilmember David?
Aye.
Councilmember John?
Aye.
Councilmember Sweet?
Aye.
Mayor Portman?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Aye.
Should pass the six-year-olds. Thank you. So I understand this is city manager report, which we don't have a city manager. But if you'll, I'm going to ask Matt to come up and give us an update on the pool. And before he does, I'm just going to take a moment to, to let people know that I was down, maybe you all were at the Old Bisbee post office today. I saw him installing the magnetic locks that we're putting on the doors so that we're starting extending the hours. So that's exciting when the next few weeks, we'll have all that in place with the security cameras. And hopefully we'll be able to come out and announce that we'll be opening the post office beyond 4:30. So that's a good thing. Took a little while, but we finally got to get there. So thank you, public works. Matt, would you take a moment?
Yeah, so I, I'm going to be reading an email. I talked to the city manager yesterday before he left the Phoenix and kind of wanted to see his thoughts. And on his, what, his recommendation was just to read this email. This is directly from our engineers. So it kind of gives some insight into the pool. So this is not my words, these are the engineers. So it's a little lengthy, but "Based on the information provided about the pool, we do not recommend you reopen the pool until a full system assessment has been completed and resulting improvement recommendations as constructed. For any pool regardless of the size, ADQ requires at least two return inlets. ADQ requires two return inlets per 600 square foot pool surface area. Therefore, just based on the pool surface area, we are estimating that you need at minimum 11 return. Based on the previous meetings, you've communicated to us that there is only one return inlet active and that the connection to the other returns have been cut off and sealed off at some point in the past. One return inlet is not enough to provide adequate 360-degree circulation of filtered plus disinfected water throughout the pool. When there is not adequate circulation throughout the pool, this can become a health and safety hazard due to stagnant unmixed water. This creates opportunities for buildup of bacteria, debris, and other contamination. In addition, it appears that the chlorination line is only connected on the solar roof, sorry, on the roof solar heater return lateral. It is our understanding that the filtered water was, water is not always pumped through the solar heater lateral. As a result, this can result in unchlorinated water returning back to the pool, thereby creating an opportunity for a health hazard. Electrical equipment was observed to all the, to all the, sorry. The electrical equipment was observed to all the past its useful life. It was observed that there were panels duct taped together in the public area where kids can be, be around. This is dangerous and a safety hazard. In general, based on observed pipe size and estimated pool volume, the suction drain line and discharge return line diameters are too small, are too small for the required pumping rates for both the eight-hour and six-hour turnover rates. Too small pipes will result in velocities, pressures that exceed the maximums set by ADQ. In general, the below-ground pipes need CCTV. To understand the pipe condition and routing connections of the whole system, pipe diameter, diameters, and material all need to be noted as well."
Okay. Not great news, but at some point, you have to rip the Band-Aid off and make this pool so that it is safe and functional. And rest assured, we will get it there. Just don't think it's going to. Yeah. We can't make the safety part of it, then it would be a risk to our residents or visitors to my house.
Mayor, also, very quick, I just wanted to say, this is something that is over a long set of years that has been, that's been getting to this.
May I just ask a question? Why is that?
Oh, sure.
Just, I know, just a discussion and for the public, just since we brought this up. Why did we, it took us so long to realize this? And I appreciate what you said. Can you elaborate? It's in the years coming. Why, why now? Come up, why this was not, let's say by example, why it wasn't last year or the year before? Why, why are we? This, why are we here now? Can you elaborate a little bit?
I'll answer that for you. That's a big question of mine also. So in years past, basically, the county has given us a pass on allowing us to, to continue to, to function and really not up to the levels it should be. So when they finally came down and said, you need to start meeting the requirements, well, the pump had failed. So now's the time to start looking if we can meet those requirements. And this is what started the process down the road. And so we've been Band-Aid-ing, I think personally, for a number of years. You know, when the other stuff failed, they cut us out of the lines and just kept pushing more, trying to push the water through. But we're getting dead zones in that pool where water's not exchanging, and that doesn't move the chlorine, and that's not a good thing. So I think we can redo this pool and make it healthy and make it functional. It's going to take a lot of work. And, and as you know, this is going to be expensive. So we're going to have to go out and bid on it. That's going to take time. So with all that happening, it's a six-month reward project, sure. Once we get the engineering completely engineered, go out and go out and bid. And us go out for 30 days and whatnot.
So this is the proper venue where the council is announcing that the pool will not be opened?
That's the recommendation of our, of our, and we're not here to discuss this, but that's the recommendations from our engineering firm.
Hey, I do want to say, this was an email to me. This is not the official, like, engineering report. This is what has been sent to me because this is what we asked them. I need something to bring to council and public so they know.
There's, I like to promise less than provide more. And so this is not an official announcement. We haven't had the official report done. But this is, I'm keeping you up to date on what we've done so far and what the reports. So little discussion because we're not, it's not all your guests. I'm trying to be, you know, stay within the rules.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'm sure we'll bring it up. And if we did a full agenda item on it, we can discuss a lot. I'll go with that with the city manager. I'll, is there a motion?
I think, oh, before we go, just for a quick clarification on the last agenda item, the painting of the police department, it's not.
Okay.
Thank you. I make a motion to adjourn.
Good.
A motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those made, they are adjourned.